Playground, um, some crack filling and probably some larger areas that actually have to get cut out and repatch for asphalt. We're also looking at doing new lockers in the boys gym locker room. Those are pretty old as you can see from the picture. Not surprised, the girls locker rooms is in pretty good shape. The boys are missing doors and everything's kind of been used up pretty good. So, the idea is there are some issues with the girls. We're going to take a lot of parts and pieces off the boys locker rooms before they get demoed, kind of have them as stock and be able to fix some of the issues over into the girls. We'll slightly change how it's laid out because there's small lockers and large lockers and they don't actually let anybody use the large lockers. So, the thought is, is that if four are small, I'd like to go to three. So, they're all a little bit larger than just all the same size and they can use them across the board. So, we'll actually give you a little more space in there. So, if there's additional kids in the next couple of years, we should lock it. Over at the high school, we've got three things. We're going to start with the new carpeting in the main fire and orchestra rooms. Not just rooms themselves, but the offices and kind of the corridors that go through there. So, I believe it's probably when the fire damage was repaired, it's all the corridors updated in that area, but the classroom carpets is on our rolls. We want to get those updated. Kind of the same fold, we've got four business slash computer rooms that has some pretty old carpet in it that we want to get some new for and put down on there. And then, the last one is the new ceiling grid entitled in the PAC lobby. It's got updated and done in the referendum on both sides. So, if you're in the Commons, it's got the newer grid entire. If you walk in the main, it just does, but this didn't get done. So, we'd like to pull down and redone and just to get you lighting in there as well. So, I'll go get that updated. Outside, we've got a couple of projects. We want to have some money to be able to do some repairs to what I'm kind of going to southeast section of the walking path. That's kind of back behind the JV softball field. For the most part, that pass is in pretty good shape, but when the drainage got changed a little bit with the park, that kind of became the well spot and it's been, started to get eaten up pretty well. So, we're probably going to have to pull it out, raise it up to change the grade a little bit and kind of get it paid back in.
Charlie gets a slap every day.
Also, another thing we have on here is looking at doing some engineer work and potentially if there's some money left over, contingency, hopefully get some of this done. But some additional netting kind of over the soccer stands. It's not really an issue in the fall, but when baseball's going and girl soccer's going at the same time, we have had some foul walls go over top of the netting and, you know, the people sitting in the stands really aren't, based in the field, aren't aware what's going over there. So, and the last we have a little money pulled over for contingency.
Anybody have any questions? Courtney?
Relative to the ceiling in the PAC, the new ceiling in the PAC, have you talked with Bray about signage, whether there's opportunity there to raise that ceiling height at all? I think instead of just like going in and replacing what we have, I think we have an opportunity to improve that, make that better design flow with the rest of the work that's been done down there and do some really important needed signage for the PAC?
Yep, so me and Eric actually looked at some signage there.
Oh, good.
So, I am in the loop on that. The goal would be to put that back in as high as possible.
Okay.
I've not personally seen above it, but I have heard that there's a lot of mechanicals above it. So, I don't know how much we can gain out of it, but whatever we would be able to gain, we would take it as high as we can.
Right. So, is it ridiculously more expensive to put drywall or some other material in there as opposed to a ceiling grid? Because if there was something other than a ceiling grid, you might be able to, you know, do something more with the height.
It is more expensive to do like a drywalled ceiling versus a crystal ceiling like this. It also limits you on access. So, if you would have anything up above it that would fail, instead of pushing a couple of tile up and moving them out of the way and working in the ceiling, you're now cutting the holes in the drywall.
Right, right. Yeah, I know how that works. So, I guess, I guess I just would encourage you to, and Erica and I have had conversations about the signage in there and the opportunity to put a sign that's vertical, that you can see as you're approaching. So, as long as you're aware that that opportunity is there and Erica's kind of on that, I would just encourage it to be not just a sort of afterthought ceiling grid if you can do it and improve the lighting. I mean, there's a lot of things you can do in there. So, cool. Thank you. Along those lines too, I haven't been there in a while, but there also when we had those meetings were removal of award cases and doing something with those things. Have those things occurred or not?
We have not done anything with the, like the old kind of built in propication stuff.
Yes. Okay. Because I think that was part of the plan too, that those are old and don't fit really anymore. And so, I don't know if there's money available contingency when we get through this, if there's some opportunity to do some things there. So, that was one question. Two was, I'm happy to hear that we don't have an equity issue with two boys things on here, no girls, and it's really the care of the boys take of things, not, and the girls do better care. So, that's, I'm happy to hear that. Third was, the pool. I don't see anything in here associated with the pool specifically. You know, Barbara and I can speak to the girls locker room at the pool and the showers. You know, I don't know if there's just not enough money or we haven't determined that that's a high enough need, but there seems to be some need there. You know, the showers don't really work. It's starting to look, you know, tiles coming out. It looks moldy. And I don't know from the boys' perspective of the boys locker room, but I just know from the girls locker room that there's some issues with the shower room.
Any more questions? Seeing that we need a motion to approve the list of items on the capital maintenance projects for 2020, 2021. Just a second. Okay.
I would really encourage particularly, I'm just going to go back to Krista's point about the award cases and stuff. While you're in there, do the whole area and do it right, even if it means you can't put new carpet in the computer rooms for a year. I would really encourage you to focus the efforts on that space because that is used by everyone in our community all the time. It is the face of the high schools, the face of the district. Make, let's do it right. So, that's my two cents.
And recognizing that this is a fluid document, we're accepting its approval. So, okay. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye, post. All right. You've got a blueprint. How's that? All right. Item four is Wisconsin School Nutrition Purchasing Resolution. Is that you, Brian or Andy or who's? School purchasing?
Yeah, I can, I can take a shot at it and then Sarah's here as well.
Oh, where's Sarah?
Yeah, come on up.
You were blocked. Cubby blocked you. That's okay, Cubby. I know, it's the hair. I'm jealous. All right, go ahead.
So, joining, this is a buying group which comes with a lot of different benefits that I see for our district. One is that it'll gain buying power for our program. So, we will hopefully be able to reduce a lot of our costs when it comes to food. And then additionally, this buying group is really focusing on eliminating some of the non-clean labels from many of the major brands that we can purchase from. So, it will allow us to have access to healthier foods for the kids.
Gina, have you looked at this?
I have and I absolutely approve as a mom and an HR person.
And as legal counsel. And there's no conflict there. That's correct, okay. Does anybody have any questions regarding this?
I just have a question. Have we not participated in this before? Is this a new program?
Not this particular buying group. Historically, there was a different buying group and a few years ago, they split. And then, yeah, there was some conflict between the two. So, this is a newer buying group. And since they broke off, they started focusing on better nutrition in the schools.
Yeah, I think that is awesome and I'm really happy to support this.
So, that means you're going to make a motion to approve it?
I would make a motion that we approve.
Okay, well, I've heard that. It was implied. Yeah, is there a second? Okay, any further discussion?
I just want to make one comment. And I'm just using this opportunity because it's not quite fair, but Anna brought this up at our last meeting and I would like the district to really look at providing good, healthy breakfasts for kids because whether start time is 8:05 or 8:50, kids often are not ready to eat that early in the morning. And let's just go with that and figure out a way to get them something nutritious in the morning when they get to school and their bellies are ready to eat.
Yep. And Barb, Brian and I have had a preliminary conversation about that to, to figure out what the cost of that would be for K6, what the implementation plan would be and when would the earliest implementation be if we could afford it? So, we're looking at that and hopefully have something back for you at the first meeting in April. Okay. So, yeah, thanks. Oh, we got to take a vote, don't we? Yeah, we haven't voted, we haven't approved it yet. Me, I wish, no.
Excuse me, Ms. Bichak.
Yes.
Ms. Oteroico.
Yes.
Ms. Beany.
Yes.
Ms. Flanagan.
Yes.
Mr. LeBrun.
Yes.
Mr. Zach.
Yes, motion carries six zero. Thanks. You have a buying group. All right. The last item on the action items is Village Park Board Representative. This is on the agenda. I had a conversation with Tim, who is our park board rep for the Village of Oregon, and he wanted to update us on some developments and whether or not we should put a position and put to the village on it. Tim, the floor is yours.
So, I've been participating on the park board for the last couple of years and actually more than that. And it's been fascinating to connect the village with what the school district is doing. And more recently, that has become a very important issue for me because I see lots of money being spent. There's been a lot of changes at the village board level and new perspectives, which is always a great thing. And you will be noticing in the very near future, over the next couple of years, some significant changes to village parks. They've, the village has recognized for some time now that they really haven't put money into a lot of the parks. Most of the parks don't have bathrooms, for instance. Very few of them have parking areas. There is some confusion, some ambiguity around community parks versus neighborhood parks. And some of the more recent developments, that being the planning of JC Park West, has really started to affect things like the soccer organization who will lose, at least temporarily, some of their playing surfaces. And with 900-plus kids in the district who play soccer, it's a big deal. So, the soccer organization, just as an example, is looking to do more practicing or more playing in some of the community or neighborhood parks, which is causing a ripple effect through those neighborhoods. And so, as I've been participating in that process, a, the development of JC Park West has been approved. And it was originally approved with some community support, a half a million dollars being raised by the community, followed by a couple of million dollars as a first step by the village, with another couple of million dollars as a second step. And over the last two, eight months or so, that second and third step have been combined to say, hey, if the, if the village, if the community, when the community raises a half a million dollars, the village is willing to spend the money to do the rest of the work, about four million dollars. It's a lot of money. During that period of time, we have purchased some additional school property. The property specifically that I'm talking about is the 106 or 7 acres at the edge of Oregon between here and Highway 14, across the street from McDonald's, just so people have a sense of where that is, where we are going to need some athletic fields to support whatever schools go in there, whether it be middle school, elementary school, or whatever goes in beyond that. And so, I thought it important from an efficiency point of view and from a master planning point of view to make sure that the district and the village get together to talk about not only what's needed, but where it should be placed. In doing that, it's, it's important to clarify that that particular property again is in Pittsburgh. And so, and that is crystal clear to the village as well. And so, over the last couple of meetings, I've made motions to have our district spend some time with the village and likely other municipalities that participate in the school district, and we know there's lots of them, to talk about funding a facility plan, to understand what happens from a school district perspective, what the needs are from a school district perspective, combined with the needs from a village perspective, combined with the needs from athletic association perspectives, so that we can all work together, again, from a taxpayer perspective, so that we're not putting in, we're not doubling our efforts and doubling the cost of those efforts. Also, in conjunction with those conversations, as perspective that have changed in the village, there is a, some momentum on the board, which will be addressed in the next village board meeting, to eliminate some of the liaison roles to the village park board. And one of those liaison roles is my role as a school board liaison, a district liaison back to the village board. The village president is looking for a focus on village residents. I am not a village resident, but Krista, for instance, would be. Yes. So, there, there is a potential for there to be participation on the park committee from a school board representative, but it would not be a school board liaison position. In addition to that liaison role, the liaison roles from the JCs would go away, the liaison role from the village board would go away. So, it would be reconstituted as village-only residents. Curiously, over the last 15 or 20 years, all of the positions, with the exception of one position, there are seven positions on the park board, will all be up for reassignment in April. And so, all of this is leading up to the fact that it is likely, quite likely, that the school district will lose its liaison role to the village park board. Before that happens, but, and also in conjunction with that happening, I think we need to move ahead and ask the village, work with the village, to assess our needs from a park or athletic facility perspective. We are going to do it for the pool and I think it should be leveraged out to the rest of the athletic facilities that are soon to be developed, either by the school district or by the village or by our surrounding municipalities. There are a lot of dollars involved with that. We are going to spend a lot of dollars just to support the school. The village will spend at least between four and four and a half million dollars just on the JC Park project to resurface most of JC Park. And they are also talking about the continued development of the Alpine Park property and a couple of other properties off of Netherwood. And I just think it behooves us as community members, as school district members, to work together as a master, in a master planning way, to make those plans, but first to understand what the need is. I think that's the most important piece, is understanding what the need is. And at the moment, I don't know that there's a mechanism in place to clearly understand not only the current need, but also the future need as our parks and our communities are developing. I know that's long-winded. I'm looking, I would like to move that we work with the village and associated district municipalities to fund an athletic facilities need analysis and then work with them to further understand where those should be placed and who should be funding them.
Yeah, I think we made that motion at the last meeting.
I think we did.
Yeah.
I just don't know if it went anywhere. So, I'm reiterating before I lose my voice on the village park board.
Yeah.
To move forward to do that.
Yeah. And that, we did have a motion in that pass and I had a conversation with Brian who's forwarded that onto Mike Grace, if I understood right.
Yes, following our last meeting. The timing was perfect. Andy and I had a meeting with the Village of Oregon. We meet, I'll say bi-monthly. And at that meeting, we share things that are going on. And when it was our turn, I shared the idea of this joint, I'll say, committee task force group. And I, I shared, our picture is that it would be bigger than just the Village of Oregon and the Oregon School District. It would include the city of Pittsburgh and also the Village of Brooklyn. And Mike gave us a sense that, sure, that, that's something we'd be interested in. We didn't talk numbers. We didn't talk getting a proposal because we thought the starting point is to get it on the table and have a staff conversation. We could certainly reach out on the school district side because when we're talking school facilities, we often end up with this facilitating consulting firm named Rettler. And they did work for us on JC Park East. They've done work for JC Park East, JC Park West. And I think it would be very feasible and wise because they know us as a community to begin our conversation with them.
So, Brian, we'd like you to go back to the village and just reiterate that that was a subject of a motion, that it's the will of the board, the school board, that we engage with the village and other municipalities to, to look at that type of study. The thing that troubles me more, Tim, because we've made that known, is losing a longstanding voice on the park board and it has been a longstanding voice. I know Andy served as our rep for a long, long time and that has resulted in a number of wonderful things for the Oregon area community in terms of developing our parks and for their operation. JC East was a prime example of the cooperation between the district and, and the village. You know, the fact of the matter is, is that we do maintenance and upkeep of some of the village parks, including Kaiser Park and the ball fields are, those are maintained by school district employees in the summer. We do the scheduling for the activities on those, those fields. And, you know, it's been a cooperative. And so, to hear that the village is seeking to remove us as a voice on the, on the park board where we've had mutual beneficial interest over the years concerns me. So, I would like to go on the record as a board is that our Board of Boys is removing us as a, as a liaison on the village park board.
Have we had any discussions with the village board president on that seat from a, Steve, from your perspective or us as Village of Oregon residents on the Oregon School District Board about that seat?
No, I have not.
Do we need to do something formal as a board or is that something that you would take under your?
Tim, what do you think? I mean, you, you were at the park thing where we got a statement from the village president. You got a statement from the village president. Why don't you?
I, I think it would be, I think it would be very helpful, Steve, for you to have that conversation. I think Brian has had that conversation with, with his peer, with Mike. I think it would be helpful for you to have that conversation with your peer, with Jeannie, just to reiterate the importance of working together, especially when we're talking about spending that kind of money for thousands of kids and, and village residents.
Be more than happy to have that as, you know, if we feel that's a route to go as opposed to formal action. But what I'm, what I'm seeing is a general consensus of the board that we'd like to maintain that.
Can I make a comment? I think that's a great way to start, but we may want to consider at a, as a next step if we feel like it's important to have a more formal statement about the loss of that role.
My understanding is they're going to be acting on this next Monday, you know? So, you know, I've had no communication as board president from the village that that's going to happen. And I don't think, Brian, you've had any communication as superintendent from an administrative standpoint that that's contemplated, so.
That is correct.
Tim, what's, what's the purpose of this reorganization of the park board? Is there a stated purpose as to why they're doing it?
The purpose is to, as described, modernize the board and to focus it with village residents, village-only residents. And because today, three, those liaison positions are all positions from outside of the district currently, or outside of the village, rather. They are liaison positions like ours, but I live in the town of Oregon, just as an example. And the others live outside as well, coincidentally.
That's, that's pretty common for you in a municipality to say that the people that are on their committees are that municipality's residents. But with the Oregon School District, we have three representatives on our board that are village residents. So, I think that's the point, right? Like, I can understand if she would not want you to not fill that role from the board because you don't live in the village, but we certainly have three people that are always on this board that are Village of Oregon residents that could fill that role, which is pretty critical given our relationship and the work that we do for the village on behalf of their parks because they do not have a parks and rec department.
Well, as, you know, in, in defense of our non-village board members who've served ably on the, on the park board, the, we represent the school district, which includes a whole bunch of village taxpayers too, you know? So, and, and I, you know, if the village wants to limit us to appointing a village resident, you know, I could live with that. But, you know, I think our non-village representatives, you know, have an equal concern about tax base and tax dollars as well, so I would.
Let's try. I think we just need to win a battle, not the war, you know?
Well, you know, a point's a point and, you know, I.
So, I just clarified that. And they would, they could certainly have somebody on the park board who is also on the school board, but that would be coincidental, not a requirement.
Correct.
Yes.
Yeah, and what, what I'm hearing is that, you know, given the nature of the relationship over the years, that there's a benefit to having, you know, the Oregon School District on that because we hold a substantial amount of green space in, in the village and we've been a good partner over the years in terms of providing tax dollars, school tax dollars for use of village fields and maintenance of village fields. Okay, I will have the conversation. Thanks, Tim. That takes us to staffing report. Who's leading the show?
Gina will get us started.
All right, thank you. So, you have a pretty big packet in front of you. So, I just want to say from the outset that our goal tonight, because it is an informational item, is to receive your feedback and questions and to let me know what information you would like me to provide so that you can make a decision on the April 13th board meeting. Right now, this is a working draft of our best thinking, but we are still looking at course proposals at middle school and high school. So, we may have a tweak when we come back. And we also may change it based on the feedback and questions that we get tonight. So, just to start off, I wanted to say I'm just really grateful to be in this position. We have really hard conversations as a team because we always have more needs than we have available budget for. And I'm just really appreciative that we are in a growing district where we're looking how to spend our unallocated funds as opposed to cutting. So, I'm just really grateful for that and I'm grateful to be part of a team where I really feel like we look at what's best for all of our students in the big picture. So, with that, turning to the purple, what really guides our discussion as a team is really the staffing principles that the board last revised in February of 2015. We always look at our classrooms and try to keep our class sizes within the class size guidelines as much as possible. We look at EPI recommendations for special education. We look at our open enrolled students that are a part of our community and the space projections that were set in January. As always, we really focus on the value of our. As always, we really focus on the value of our whole child and providing well-rounded opportunities for our students as well as taking care of their social and emotional and mental health needs. We always try to be fiscally responsible in our decision-making, and we just continue to monitor our enrollment on a weekly, if not daily, basis at this point. So with that, just wanted to give you a sense of where we're looking at enrollment-wise. We're doing things a little bit differently this year because we are planning for significant growth of construction during the spring and summer, so just wanted to show you on our tables where we are with currently enrolled students. So these numbers are students that are currently attending, rolling them forward, as well as all new enrollments that we've received so far. We do project to have more students than you'll see here, but just wanted to give you actual numbers as of March 1st. With that, I will turn to the budget summary. You heard a lot about this from Andy at our last meeting. Had a few revisions for you, just letting you know the big picture estimate. That did not change from what you heard last time. If you look at significant expenditures, there's a few modifications that I have for your consideration tonight. One, if you look at the educator compensation plan, I really broke that up into two different numbers. So if you remember, on our educator compensation plan, right now, we have educators within three levels, the green, orange, and blue. We don't have anyone officially in the purple level, but we do have educators within those salary bands above the blue level that I really have named off schedule. So they're not, they haven't been moved into the purple. No one has, and that's part of the discussion later, but we have 31 educators that are above that blue level. So if you look at just educators that are moving from the green to the orange and the orange to the blue, that's $204,000 estimated for the educators we have right now. In the past eight years that I've been here, we've always hired at least 40 new educators new to us, so, you know, that is an estimate because that can change. And then we also broke out the educator compensation plan increase. So that's money that's set aside for those levels and for those levels to move. If we, if we do that in the bargain, so that number can be subject to change because that's up for bargaining with the OEA. So just wanted to call your attention to that. And then, third, we broke out into the non-educator staff salary increases, so those are folks that are not on the educator compensation, and I wanted to give you a range there because I would like to talk about 1.81 is the max weekend to on base wages under CPI, but I would say most of the comparable districts are at 2% to 3%. So just wanted to let you know if we did a 1.81 or a 2%, just for you to see the difference there. So as a team, you know, I'd like the board to consider a 2% raise for the hourly staff as well as educators not on the comp plan. So wanted you to see that range for a final ask in April. I'm happy to report that our health insurance increase is really thanks to Andy's excellent negotiating skills with courts as well as significant work by our wellness committee. Our experience in our health insurance is great this year. We're really proud of that. And so instead of the 4% cap we have in our contract, our increase is only 2%. So that's really significant savings on that end, which makes a big difference. And then you'll see the other costs there, which are the same as Andy reported last time. So what does all of that mean? So if you accept the premises above, that means we have, and I'll just, we have $393,000 to $413,000 in unallocated funds. So this year, we put forward two options for you to consider, and the board has discussed this in the past, that option one would be to only hire legally required positions. So those are the positions that we need to provide for our students really based on items in their IEP. So by federal law, we have to do that. We would also recommend to the board that we increase the stipend that we give to our 4K community partners. Andy has a lot more information on that, but essentially, the state funding that we've been given for 4K has increased over time, but the amount of funds we've given our 4K partners, we've only increased by about $100. And our partners have asked for additional funds. They're facing the same labor market that we are, quite honestly. So I think the intent of our partners would be to spend that money on staff, and we would have a provision in our contract to increase the minimum salary for the lead and associate teachers that would go along with that increase. So if we, and that increase by $100 would cost about $22,000 in Table 1. We have a student who's coming in that needs sign language, so we will need a sign language paraprofessional, which we have not had full-time in the past, so the estimate is there. And then really, one option is to place the rest as really reserved unallocated funds for things such as looking how to move educators into that purple level. We have started discussions with the OEA about that. We have talked with the board about a new post-retirement plan for educators. We can fund a significant portion of that currently, but in order to have that ongoing, that's an ongoing commitment, so we could save money for that. So you'll see the total cost there. Then a second option, which is what the team is really looking at recommending to the board at this point, is that we take those, the $393,000 in unallocated funds. So we would, we would still recommend the 4K increase and the sign language paraprofessional, but then we would take the rest of that money and allocate that for new positions, and I will explain why. So I will start with the middle school. The exciting thing about next year is that we will have relief to our overcrowding at 5th and 6th grade, but that means that our middle school is really now the place where our class sizes are getting to be quite large. And we haven't put, most of our funding has really been allocated at the K6 level, so we really haven't allocated new money for the middle school in a few years. And Shannon has done a wonderful job of piecing things together to make great experiences for our learners, but in looking at the class sizes and their tests for you to look at, that we really felt that we need to start adding FTE or our class sizes are going to be above 30. And so what the recommendation is, is that we would look at increasing FTE in FIDE and Health, English, German, Band, and Choir. There is a potential that we might have some allocation from RCI that we could move to the middle school, Enquirer, and Band, but we'll know that more in May, once we know which students are going where and what their interests are. The nice thing about increasing FTE in English, German, Band, and Choir is that we do have part-time educators in those positions now that are interested in having additional FTE, so we don't have to go out and find somebody that would, just wants to do little portions of those. We can increase part-time people in those positions now, other than the PE Health. And, but that's a full-time position, so that'll be easier to attract. Additionally, with our, our reading program is that we have seen the numbers increase of kids that need that more intense learning opportunity in reading, and so one cost-effective way to address that, which is what we've done in K6, is to add a really talented reading paraprofessional to help with some of those groups. And then additionally, just looking at the number of students in the building and the needs that we have there, is we had a PBIS coach already assigned to the middle school, and Shannon and Jason's vision is to use the funding for the PBIS coach and convert that to an admin intern position for next year. We do pay admin interns on the educator compensation model, so it would be cost-neutral for that position. So that's what we're looking at for the middle school, and that's based on class size guidelines, and I'm happy to answer more questions about that. And then really turning our attention to the high school. So we've had significant discussions with Jim about really looking at how do we transform the experience of our learners at the high school and looking at the path forward and really implementing the vision that the board has for students there. And so I have a PowerPoint to talk through that vision. So I will turn to that. Thank you, Andy. So in terms of, and Leslie can help me here, so in terms of what Jim is really looking to do is, what is the learner experience for students at the high school? We really want to implement the individual learning plans for all students. So part of that is that in grade nine, looking at having transition plans as students move into high school, that for grade 10, all students would have a check-in, so individual conferences, that we would have embedded academic and career planning activity for all grades. We would have advisory-led ACP learning activities as part of their advisory experience. We would increase our options for job shadows, mentoring, passion projects, capstone projects, and other things to really give our students that hands-on learning opportunity. Then in grade 11, we would really focus on post-secondary planning, so whether that be college, two-year, you know, career-to-work, really helping kids focus on what does life look like after graduation? And then senior year, we would have checkout conferences for each and every student. So if that looks like a lot, it is, but it's pretty exciting to think about. So of course, the question is, well, how do you plan to accomplish that? So we would implement what, as far as I can tell, Jim Pliner has coined the phrase neighborhood model, because if you Google that, I was not able to find it, so I think that's a Jim Pliner term, so I have to joke with him that this might be his PhD. So really, we would, we would look at adding a full-time counselor, as well as we have one counselor at point nine, so we'd increase her to full-time, and really have four groups. If we could add an associate principal, so we'd have four groups where every group would have an administrator, counselor, and admin assistant assigned to that group. So for example, let's say we did it by the alphabet. Group one might have, I'll make it up, A through E, like your last name starts with, and that you would have a team dedicated to you, and they would really look at, okay, to make sure that we're implementing the vision that I just discussed. And students in the same family would be served by one neighborhood. So that would really help us go, as Jim would say, go narrow and deep, get to know our learners, get to know their families, get to know their individual interests so that we have continuity. And so that administrator sign would either be an associate principal or the principal. And this neighborhood model will help us ensure that each student has an aligned team of support that can really get to know them, build stronger relationships with not only them, but their families, and then that would enable us to focus on more individualized learning opportunities for students. So how do we accomplish that? We've, we've started that process already, so our vision for next year would be if we added the associate principal and the counselor, that we would start implementing that neighborhood model, but then we would have a steering committee made up of Jim, a counselor, and our school career coordinator. And so having an associate principal would free up a little bit of Jim's time to really focus and have that steering committee to really design and implement and make sure that that, we're putting systems in place to make sure that we can ensure that opportunity for each and every student. Next slide. So with, so with that ask, you can look at the funding that would be attached to that. So again, looking at adding that 1.1 FTE counselor, the associate principal position, which we would pay for part of that by an unfilled position, as well as additional funds, in order to implement the neighborhood model. And then our final recommendation is to add an assistant director of instruction that would provide additional leadership, not only overseeing part of the path-forward vision, but also student achievement in our district, which would really put us more in line with our comparable Dane County districts, and that would be a reallocation of funds that we have in the budget. So if you look at the positions I identified in Table 1 and Table 2, that would total an estimated $350,000. I'm sorry, $350,000 for Table 2, and then adding the positions in Table 1. And then Table 3 is what we have had the past couple of years called a watch list, where we really look at our student enrollment needs and look at what we may need to meet class size guidelines, K4 in special education. And then we're hopeful at some point to be able to add an SEL coach and a social worker. Leslie and I really think we can find those skills in one person. And so because right now, we have an SEL coach, K6, and a social worker, K6, so without this position, that means they serve five schools, which they both assured us is completely doable, but we know not ideal. So one thing that's attractive about that position from a watch list standpoint is that should we get to have additional funds, is that's a position we really could hire even, you know, even September, October. It doesn't have to go with the school year calendar. And then Table 4 is just to let you know sort of what you might see on future staffing reports. You know, no surprise, our students' needs just continue to grow, particularly in math intervention, mental health, and bilingual education, and then just alternative to the traditional classroom environment. So we don't anticipate asking for these for this year, but we will likely need them in the near future as we monitor our student needs. And then Table 5 is just an informational piece for the board to know the positions that we plan on filling at Forest Edge right now, but again, really watching our student enrollment, and we will know more in May when we finish the exemption process for our families. With that, we have, just to let you know where we are staffing-wise, our summary of retirement and resignations. It's, it's a little bit early for folks to tell us their plans next year, and with that, I will turn it to Brian.
Board members, just a gentle reminder, Gina is our team leader on putting together the report. You have, our goal tonight was to get this information out for your review and consideration. If, if we do what we have done in the past, you have shared information either here at the meeting tonight, if something's right on the tip of your tongue. Otherwise, you've provided that information to Steve, and Steve has provided it to me, and we routed through the administrative process and then get you an answer well in advance of the night we're seeking your recommendation, which it is a late meeting in April. It's actually April 13th this year, so we have plenty of time to answer all of your questions, and we're happy to answer some questions if you have specific ones tonight as well.
I have one more thing, and I did want everyone to know, I did make a note here for Troy's information about the para-supervision, and now that we have a decision on school start times, I can start looking at that and what that means for our hourly folks. I will come back with information about that as well.
Any questions for Gina or Brian? Krista, go ahead.
Some are questions, some are maybe suggestions. I see that we haven't looked at the staffing guiding principles. I know I've mentioned this in the past, since February 9th of 2015, and I don't know if that's a discussion for this, or if it's something that Leslie would put on our strategic planning session for May, but five years is a long time to look at how we really have guiding principles for a budget in times of change, so I really would encourage us to look at that. Couple other things. Gina, you mentioned for the non-educator staff salary increases, the 2%, what are the comparable districts you talked about that do that at 2%? Gina, offhand?
Yes, so as HR directors, we, Dane County HR directors, we meet once a month, and so we're all in the same process of looking at what we recommend for next year. So when I look at comparable districts, I always monitor what Madison is doing, but we don't, they're not necessarily, they're so different than we are. So I really look at Stoughton, McFarland, Verona, Sun Prairie, Middleton, DeForest, and Wanakee.
Okay, thanks. Couple other things. One, for the three, and maybe this isn't for discussion, but to get to us later, the breakdown between, of the two educator compensation plan, the 204 and the 325, it would be good to know how you break that up in terms of what you're looking at for off-schedule or what the plan is, what makes up those amounts. Same for the remaining unallocated funds in the fund balance, that 341, you have a few things in that box. It would be good to know how. It would be good to know how that is broken up. Then I guess my other big question is associated with the neighborhood model that Jim presents. I think one thing the school start times has really helped us do is really get out of the silos that we're looking at K-6, and we're looking at 712. And if you're building this whole neighborhood model for 912, why are we not looking at it for 78? That we're really looking at this piece of how we're viewing kids and relationships and the communities and the neighborhoods, shouldn't we be looking at 78? Because we know that we're dealing with mental health and behavioral issues, and I'm guessing that this is a plan that not only helps with career pruriness, but looks at behavior and how we're handling and how we're allocating staff. And if we're not going to look at a dean of students model, I think we really should be looking more at 712 together and how we're building these, if you want to do it, more piecemeal, or building teams around kids. We should look at 78 in that plan. And I don't know if other board members agree, but that's just something that occurred
So I can, I can address at least part of the educator compensation part. And so really, what I did is if you look at the educator compensation numbers that, or at the last budget summary, so really, we do an estimate at, okay, 1.81, what does that look like across the district, right? And so looking at, okay, if I take, that was for everybody. So you have movement in the schedule, and then you look at a 1.81 increase for everybody, what's that number, right? Well, our comp plan doesn't work that way, because people might get, you know, people might get no increase, they might move a level, we might increase the levels, that's all subject to bargaining with the OEA. So what I do is I just take that big number, I take out the amount that's for the non educator compensation folks, and just look at what's my number that's left, and that's how much right now I'm allocating to have to bargain with the OEA. But you could give me direction that you want a different number. Does that help?
Any other questions at this point? I know it's a lot to digest. Barb?
Looking at the neighborhood model, I mean, it seems like I, I understand the rationale for it. It seems like it could be very helpful. Has the staff weighed in on this and how they see that might work at the high school?
So I'm going to look to Leslie, Brad, and Kim for that. Okay.
I know this is something we've been talking a lot with the student service staff. They're really excited about this, the opportunities, the possibilities that we can do with the students, because right now, you know, just getting to all the needs of what we need to get to students is that this comprehensive planning is going to allow us to have that connective time throughout that four years. And even right now, the teaming aspect between that group is just really going to help a lot. And I would, I'd even like Cubby to weigh in on what he feels about that.
Yeah, I had a few thoughts. I really like that model, the neighborhood model. I think that, at first, it may seem that it looks like it might segregate students, but it, it really doesn't. See, we, we already split students up between counselors by last name, and, you know, there's no discrepancies between our, our counselors. They're all great. I was wondering how the model would adjust for our expected growth. Would we have to add a completely new sort of neighborhood if we feel that the existing ones are already maybe too big? That was my question.
Well, I, I think that, Cubby, this is going to allow us to have that a little bit, as of adding that additional administrator to it, and that additional counselor, is it does give us room for growth, so that's going to help us out a lot for that. So I think that it's going to be, we're really planning for the future is what we're doing.
And then the second thing was, I saw something about advisory and using that as a time for, you know, career planning. I think that would be great. I know as a student, one of the biggest things that I have seen that is complained about is actually the advisory time. It is very controversial, I guess, among our students, and I, I think that if we give, if we designate that time, I know that we have a lot that we want to fit into those times, you know, the Pride Crew stuff that we've been doing this year. There's only so many advisors in a year that, you know, that we can put stuff in, but using that as a time for the career planning, I think that would be amazing, as well as the extra conference for the sophomores. I think that would be amazing as well. I know that it is a lot to ask of our counselors, assuming they would be the ones running those meetings with the students. Okay. But I, I remember my junior meeting last year, and I know that I had, you know, been three years in the high school, but it's, it seemed really sudden for me, and I know that's probably just me, lack, my lack of planning, but I think, you know, getting students to start thinking about life after high school as soon as, you know, they step foot here, as well as maybe even in middle school, I think that would be great.
I would just add, so I think we're really excited about the fact that this neighborhood model could bring some additional things for advisory in addition to our social-emotional learning that we do in our PBIS model, but definitely, it's a part of the, the plan that we're extremely excited about, because we do know that even by grade level, our kids need some different things at different times and different grades, so we want to make sure we meet all those needs, and we think the neighborhood model could be a way we do that really well for our students.
And I'm looking really forward to the freshman aspect of it, because I really think that bringing, you know, coming up to the high school, that a foundation for those kids are so important, and really having the individual conference where they feel like they've heard we're starting that individual learning plan, getting that off the ground, is just really important. And those touch spots along the way are just, you know, when we go to senior capstone and we see that end product, I really want to see, what I would like to see is those freshman conferences, how they came in, and just that end journey along the way, and it, you know, can be a really neat experience for all kids and really guide them throughout that process, so.
Okay, I'm not quite done. I guess I still, my question is, the teaching staff, our academic staff, how they're feeling about this, and I don't need an answer to that, but just something to think about is sometimes individual teachers really, often, they click with kids, and, and they get to know kids really well, and how, how are they going to interact with the neighborhood team? And you don't have to answer that. That's just a, I mean, they're an important piece of this, although their role may not be as formal, but we know that, you know, individual teachers can play important roles in the lives of students. And then just my second comment is, something to think about, again, I'm not looking for an answer, is if there's some data that you might want to start collecting, and as this gets underway, to see where we're having impact. Is it impacting achievement? Is it impacting mental health? Is it impacting attendance, whatever? Just thinking about some data that might be helpful to evaluate a few years down the line.
To address that, Barb, and I will make a note to make sure that we have Jim address the teacher feedback point when we come back in April, but I know Jim and I did talk specifically that that would be one role for the steering committee, to look at what data, what data we will have, or we should look at to see if we're being effective and how we're going to monitor that data. So I know that is a really key piece to that steering committee, because we know that the board is looking for those metrics of success.
Along the line, if we're implementing the vision from the path forward, the thought was that the leadership teams were going to weigh in on that, and so I'd be interested in, you know, the reaction of the high school leadership team and how they see that the path forward vision meshes in with this neighborhood plan, and also the middle school to echo on what Krista said, because, you know, that, that, it really is an arc, and it's not just here. It really starts in seventh and eighth grade. There was, on the slide, you talked about grade 11 being, you know, starting to talk about college, you know, the next step out. That really should happen earlier. I mean, that's, that's a freshman high school pathway, so, you know, I know there's a lot to work out on this, but I would encourage a broader look at that. I mean, when I first heard that, and we, Leslie and Brian kind of gave me a heads-up at when we met, and I said, you know, that's a really intriguing way to get at the path forward and, and the planning that we had talked about, and revamping how we look at the counseling and the guidance area, along with the APs and the role there, and how that might work in with the teachers too, because, you know, you could assign teachers into a neighborhood as well to work with the kids. I mean, that, really an intriguing way to go about it.
Yes, and I know the leadership team is a really critical component to the thinking of this as well, so I made notes to that effect.
The other aspect is we just talked about bringing in mentors and teachers kind of taking on mentorship of, of those students in different capacities, so that could be another aspect, kind of what you're talking about.
Expanding the neighborhood. You know, you're, you're putting the leadership guide, the, the, you know, that whole model is going to be labor-intensive and personnel-intensive to make sure it's structured the right way and people know how to run it the right way, and so that makes a lot of sense to me to do that, but the neighborhood's broader than just those three. I mean, the, the three would help facilitate a lot of that conversation and discussion with the student.
I guess the other cons, or questions I have about the neighborhood is there's this ACP component, right? There's a mental health component, and then we're also dealing with things that are coming down the pipeline in terms of behavioral or anti-hate speech, or, and so I'm looking at consistency across neighborhoods and buildings, and so I think, you know, that's more of the component of the neighborhood. Like a community deals with a lot of things, and so are the people in the neighborhood that have expertise and knowledge to deal with all those things, and how are the neighborhoods working together? And that puts a lot of, it also puts a lot of stress on a principal or assistant principal. And if we're investing in more associate principals, I think that has to be this piece of, how are you all connecting across buildings, right? It's easier if you have a dean of students concept, because it ends with one person, but you all have different philosophies too about how you look at things, and so are, how are we as a board looking across buildings, because these are families and kids, and then they don't start and stop once they change a building.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, we've got kind of some homework to do, and again, once, you know, like our last homework assignment, if you've got questions, route them through me, and then I can get the convenient package to the administration to get bounced back, and then we'll have an extended conversation at our April meeting on that. Is the expectation that we would approve this plan at the first meeting in April?
Yes, to make it short.
Okay.
But we also understand we want the board to be comfortable. And one position that I'm going to have a conversation with Steve about that we'd like to advance sooner is the reallocation of our director of instruction position, because that is in a very competitive environment. And if we have someone internal for that position, that would likely create a principal opening, which would create a set of dominoes. And if we, I, I know the position, the goal is to post the position in order to get possible external applicants as well, we need to be about that. Now, that's a, I'll say a net neutral position, actually. It will save, you know, some funds from what we were paying on the deputy superintendent's side. So I'm going to have a conversation with Steve, because we, we'd like to get that going, just because of the impact it has on administrative staffing internally, and also our ability to recruit outside. So not a decision.
Given, you know, my initial thought on that is given that it's a zero-budget impact, you know, that it becomes somewhat operational, but I'm seeing, some people aren't necessarily agreeing with that, to eliminate the deputy superintendent position, so we're going to hold on that. That's why I ask. So if there were any, any, any questions, so we'll have a conversation, because if it becomes competitive, we might have to have a conversation.
Yeah, we, we can, we can hold until April. Our preference would be to, you know, post it as soon as we can.
Good. Any other questions? All right. Informational items, COVID-19. Continuing on our theme tonight of fuzzy and complicated issues, this certainly meets that standard. I'll say there's three things that I'd like to share. First, we've spent a lot of time learning and networking about COVID-19 and what impact that will have on local school districts, and obviously, the country has a huge challenge on our hands as well. Secondarily, we know it's going to impact trips, and we have a go-global trip, which was initially going to Vietnam, that we realigned to go to Budapest and Prague, and we're going to need to make a decision this week, as soon as Jim gets back, on whether that's a go or no-go for, for spring break. Secondarily, we have a choir trip going to New York City over spring break. And third, we have an incoming trip from Germany, our, our German sister city exchange. They will be coming April 3rd or April 4th, and then our trip to Germany is in June, and I'm not trying to pre, we're not making a decision based on what we read in the Wisconsin State Journal, but over the weekend, the UW-Madison suspended a spring break program in German, in Germany, and summer programs in China, Italy, and South Korea. So the likelihood of us needing to make a decision on whether our sister city students are, whether it's appropriate for them to come. Gina reached out to UW-Madison today to learn more, you know, what led them to that conclusion, because Germany is not on the watch list right now, but UW-Madison's perspective was, it likely will be shortly, and they wanted to make a decision to get ahead of the game. So no decision for the board tonight. We're, I talked to Steve about our trips, and we both view this as an operational item. Obviously, goal number one for us is to take care of kids and to take care of families, and that we will do. I know, no matter what we, no matter what we do, there will be some that believe we should have gone on the trip, and some that believe it's appropriate to cancel the trip. Again, when Jim gets back, we're going to put our heads together and make final decisions this week on that. And then the last theme under COVID-19 is, we are going to continue to learn. This is, we are not out of the woods. This is going to be a complicated issue that's part of America, part of our global society and part of American life for a while. We are doing our best not to overreact. We are trying to be methodical in our planning. We've, tomorrow afternoon, we have a meeting with Dr. Joanna Bisgrove. She is our health advisor. We were in touch with Joanna before we sent out the update to all parents. We've been in touch with the governor's office, and the governor's office has been in touch with us. We've received some information from the Wisconsin Department of Health Services, so we'll continue to work with them. Leslie, John, and I had the opportunity to meet with Dr. Tempti on the orchards influenza study, and we had a physician from the CDC who gave us an update two weeks ago, two and a half weeks ago, and then also the World Health Organization. So we're doing a lot of networking on this whole COVID-19 situation that we face as a, as a global citizen group, and we will continue to keep you posted as we learn more about it. I'm going to push the pause button for a second and just see if that's created any questions for you in the never-ending game of moving parts in public education.
I just have one, and I've known from other, not necessarily here, but school districts that have closed, is one component is the food in terms of kids that are on free and reduced lunch. If it's going to be an extended time, it'd be great, whenever that point, if it does happen with Food Pantry and Friends of Oregon School District, I'm sure we'd love to meet with you and talk about kids that we potentially would need to get food to.
Food insecurity is a huge issue in every community, and we
Food insecurity is a huge issue in every community and we want to get ahead of that in the event that we are closed. Likely an extended closure would not be a superintendent call. It's not a snow day. That's really a state Wisconsin Department of Health Services or a CDC decision that, that we get.
You can roll to the superintendent's report.
Okay. Under superintendent's report, if there's anything that this meeting reminds me of, it's the importance of continuous improvement. And it's the importance of knowing that you do not know it all and that you constantly have to expand your learning, expand your networking. And there are no easy answers to really complicated matters. And this is, this is a complicated matter with the COVID-19. It's a complicated matter with school start times. It's a complicated matter to put the puzzle pieces together for the appropriate staffing plan for 4,200 kids as we continue to grow and develop. I do have, I'm so lucky, I get to go to two more board meetings this week, but none of you will be at those board meetings. Tomorrow night, I'm going to be at the city of Pittsburgh because we are on the agenda for an amend, for the city of Pittsburgh's comprehensive plan. And from all of the conversations I've had, we have a thumbs up and we believe that the comprehensive plan will be modified. And then I always refer to it as the Donaldson property. It's technically the Oregon School District residence property, but the Donaldson property would then be approved for an institutional use and we can continue to plan and get it set for the next referendum of a middle school and athletic fields and all of the other planning that we're looking at in the years ahead. We also, another item to report on, I pinned down just this morning, our shared service agreement meeting, which is connected to the Donaldson plan. We will be meeting with the Village of Oregon and the city of Pittsburgh. It's just a staff meeting to sort of kick off our work on preparing the shared service agreements so we can get water and sewer access to the Donaldson property. It's something Steve and I have been talking about for a while and it is on my homework list to get finished here in the final leg of my work with the district and we will do our best to get that done. We're scheduled for next Thursday at 10:00 AM and we'll continue to bring that forward and we'll provide you with updates. And again, we, our informal conversations that we've had, we thought we could wrap this up in a couple of months. A reminder on the capital maintenance, I hope you noticed at the very bottom of the capital maintenance, it's about $600,000. And just dusting off your memory in a positive way, not in a COVID-19 way, $400,000 of that came from the referendum. And that $400,000 is now permanent funding that Andy and Zane have access to so we can continue to invest in our facilities and keep them looking great. There's $200,000 that's been part of our annual operating budget and Andy has protected those funds to make sure that we have the infrastructure type of investment we need because I have not put together a calculation of what the physical assets that the residents of the Oregon School District own, but it has to be close to $300 million worth of school investments. And we need to continue to invest in that so we don't get in a situation where we have to have referendums to pay for fixing black asphalt and concrete, et cetera. Then something I found that I didn't know I was going to report on, but an alum of the Oregon School District and a parent in the Oregon School District, I found her picture today in a Madison College newsletter and I know you know this individual. It's Dr. Lanay Lavoy. And she recently received recognition by, from the Wisconsin Association of Hospitality and Lodging Association as the Associate of the Year. She's a professor at Madison College. She's been very involved in various community groups and is a parent of, I think, three children in the Oregon School District. So it, it's great when you open up a newsletter and you see a friendly face. So a little shout out to her for that important recognition. And then lastly, you might know something that's coming up. It's called spring break, which is the greatest thing in the world. We've learned from our influenza study. It's a way to clean out our school district and to drop, to increase attendance rates following spring break and to drop all of the germs. And as Dr. Tempty, Tempty told us, the, the regular cold and flu virus will host, the host will stay for about six hours. After six hours, which means every weekend we get clean, our facilities get cleared out, but he has charted data for the last seven years and following spring break, there is a real decline in, in influenza. So our spring break's coming up, March 23rd to the 27th. There will be a few of us around. I won't be one of those people around, but I will have my cellphone in the event that you need something. So with that, I'll stop, see if you have any questions for me.
Anything? All right. Going to closing, gee, future agenda, we're gonna have staffing. Are we gonna have anything from policy? Will you guys be ready maybe? Probably not. Okay. School naming or district naming? Probably have that on as an agenda item.
Do we need to have a vision committee meeting to discuss it? Or Brian and I can?
Yeah. Should you guys talk about going through that? So those are some topics. We got a couple of things brewing that, you know, we've gotta, you know, close out the loop on to make sure.
And then Steve, I, I also jotted down in the event that the board wants to take a position on the conversation with the park board, so.
Got it.
But we have, we have a long time. We have almost four weeks before our next board meeting.
Right. And if anyone has anything else that they need on the agenda, let me know. We'll probably start at 6 o'clock because, yeah, I was thinking cupcakes. Do cupcakes work, Barb? Okay, so we're gonna have a reception for Barb and Courtney where that will be their last, last meeting, regular meeting. So we'll have Katie get in touch with you. If you want cake, you can have cake. No? Okay, so mark it for 6 o'clock start, okay? Let's go to checkout. Anna, thanks for, for your comments tonight and your work on that. It was really good. Yeah. Courtney? Okay. Barb? Krista?
Just to say that we have our policy committee meeting tomorrow at 3:30 in the district, district office, if any other board members would like to attend with this side of the room.
Yes. Yeah, a couple of things. One is just to reiterate what was mentioned earlier, our girls' basketball is going to the state tournament and they'll be playing Friday at 1:30 at the Rush Center. And I didn't realize it had been that long since I went to state because the 1980 was when Lisa Stone, or Lisa Anderson back then was on the team and Donna Freitag, you know, was on that team. And, you know, Lisa eventually became the coach at UW and Donna was her assistant. So they were tremendous. That was a really good basketball team and it's been nice to watch this team make its run. I will be up there. I will be with my father-in-law who likes to go watch that sort of thing. So then we're going to Fish Fry and we'll go down LeBrun, LeBrun Road in down, in Alloway. Secondly, Courtney's got a big event on Saturday night. Yeah, Courtney's the chair of the JDRF Juvenile Diabetes Research Foundation Gala and chair. Good luck with that. I hope you raise a ton of money. Yep. See, that's a really big and time-consuming job. It's really, yeah. So you mentioned that, you know, we saw somebody, Lanay Lavoy in the paper. Robert Kirchstoffer is a grad from Oregon and he's been in the news because he's on the faculty at the UW and has been involved in a lot of the COVID-19 stuff. And he's the youngest son of Deanna Kirchstoffer, a longtime teacher in the district. So it was cool. I coached him in mock trial and glad he didn't go the lawyer route. He went to the more lucrative route of being a researcher at the UW. Finally, a big shout out to Nate Mendel, who is our PAC director, who had the second in a series of events at the PAC. This was with Revoice, we talked about it earlier. He had a huge crowd, about 550 people there. It was really good. They did a lot of work in the district with some of the schools in terms of teaching them, the, the five guys in the band. And, and so the, the PAC was packed with families and young kids. It was a family night out and one of his goals is to make this series not only very high quality, but also affordably priced. And so, and it serves, it met both of those. Andy and I were there. It was really, really good. And to hear the sound in the PAC and to see the lighting's fantastic. So big shout out to Nate. He's got one more in the series. I don't know the date, but we'll get that out to you. All right. That's all I've got. So we need one more motion. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed. Gained at 8:40. Thanks, everyone.